Hello, East Hampton Town Board. We are live.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the East Hampton Town Board. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Councilmember Flight?
Present.
Councilmember Lees?
Present.
Councilmember Rogers?
Present.
Councilmember Call to Piedmont?
Present.
Supervisor Bert Gonzalez?
Present. I'd ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to start tonight's public hearing with the town clerk reading the notice.
Right here.
We have one.
Carol?
Carol? You can thank Chelsea.
Please take notice pursuant to the rules and regulations of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law and its Implementing Regulations at 6 NYCRR 617. The Town of East Hampton Town Board, acting as SECRE lead agency, determined on February 15, 2024, that the above referenced DGIS is complete and ready for public review and comment. Please take further notice pursuant to SECRE. Written comments on the DGIS. Following the close of the public hearing, whichever is later. DGIS NY.gov mail to airport DGIS@EHamptonNY.gov. Written comments may also be submitted to the East Hampton Town Clerk, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, New York, 11937. Please take further notice pursuant to SECRE. The Town Board will conduct a public hearing on March 13, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at East Hampton Town Hall, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, New York, to receive public comments on the DGIS. The public hearing will be held live in person, will be available electronically by video and teleconferencing, will be televised on local TV, Channel 22, and available for livestream on the LTV website. Any person or party wishing to be heard with this matter may address the board in person at the hearing or by calling into the hearing by dialing 351-888-6331. The name of the action is East Hampton Town Airport Operation Changes. Project location: East Hampton Town Airport, 173 Daniels Hole Road in Wayne Scott, Town of East Hampton, New York. Project sponsor and SECRE lead agency: Town of East Hampton Town Board. SECRE status: Unlisted action. DGIS completion date: February 15. Description of the project: The Town of East Hampton is proposing to implement long-term operational policies through the prior permission required PPR framework when legally permissible that would manage and limit allowable flight operations at the Town of East Hampton Town Airport to reduce noise and other environmental impacts. Adoption of operational policies is referred to as a proposed action. The proposed action would not involve construction or physical changes to the airport infrastructure currently on site. Operational policies being considered by the Town Board to be implemented when legally permissible include the following: time-based permissions such as curfews, operator-based permissions such as reduction or elimination of commercial operators, noise-based permissions such as reduction or elimination of aircraft that would have a noise signature that exceeds a defined threshold, size-based permissions such as elimination of aircraft that exceed a certain maximum takeoff weight, and airport director permission for certain aircraft operations such as ultralight vehicle operations, banner towing, skydive operation of Stage 1 and Stage 2 jets, and touch-and-go operations. The Town is also studying the potential environmental impacts of other reasonable alternatives to meet the purpose and needs for the proposed action, including the cessation of airport operations when legally permissible. The Town is also considering potential future changes to lead-based fuel sales, i.e. restricting or eliminating them, or the operation of aircraft that utilize them. The public hearing is March 13 at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall.
Thank you, Carol. Now, we're going to hear from Peter Ferro, who is from AKRF, who is going to open the hearing with a short PowerPoint. Welcome, Peter.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, really quick, this will be a very quick presentation for those of you who heard my last one, apologies. This one will be much quicker. So, just going to go over the purpose of the public hearing, a quick summary of the actions and how we got here, a quick overview of the SECRE process, just to put this hearing into context, and then turn it over, obviously, to the receipt of public comments. So, as the notice said, the Town is proposing to implement long-term operational policies through what's called the Prior Permission Required or PPR framework when legally permissible. So, the prior permissions that are being proposed include a time-based permission, that would be a curfew, an operator-based permission, such as restrictions on commercial operators, a noise-based permission that would limit the operations of the noisiest aircraft, an aircraft-based permission, such as sized-based permission aircraft over a certain weight, and certain airport director permissions for special events. The Town is also considering, as part of the action considered in the EIS, implementing environmental-based policies such as lead-based fuel sales. As required by SECRE, the EIS is also looking at a range of alternatives, including the permanent closure of East Hampton Town Airport when it's legally permissible. Quick overview on the timeline. The Town Airport's grant obligations, grant assurance obligations expired in September of 2021, along with most federal obligations. The Town had been in discussions with the FAA about its future options as the owner-operator of the airport, culminating in a November 2020 letter that outlined four options that the Town had for continuing operating the airport. One was to maintain the status quo. The second was to permanently close the airport. The third was to negotiate voluntary agreements with current operators at the airport. And the fourth was to close the public-use airport and reopen the airport as a private-use airport, which would allow the implementation of the PPR. In 2021, the Town underwent a re-envisioning process, a year-long public engagement process, during which 80% of the process participants articulated the opinion that the status quo of the airport operations was not acceptable. The Town drafted a Prior Permission Required Framework, those restrictions that I just spoke about, in March of 2022, received comment on that framework, and issued a final proposed PPR in April of 2022. In coordination with the FAA, the Town closed HTO, the Public Use Airport, on May 17, 2022. On May 19, 2022, the Town opened what's called JPX, which is a private-use airport. The goal was to implement the PPR framework at that time and to study the real-world impacts of that PPR. The SECRE process was completed for the closure and reopening of the airport, and the Town Board had begun scoping in EIS that would have looked at that trial period in 2022. However, litigation precluded that, and so while the FAA has officially classified the airport as a private-use facility, the Town has been operating the airport as a public-use airport, consistent with its pre-2022 policies and procedures. So, why are we here tonight? Implementing the PPR is what's called a discretionary action of the Town Board. Discretionary actions that have the potential to affect the environment are subject to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECRE. SECRE broadly requires that municipalities take what's called a hard look at the potential environmental impacts of a discretionary action prior to permanently committing themselves to that action. SECRE has prescribed steps to ensure a thorough environmental review, public participation, and an examination of alternatives. These are the broad steps in the EIS process. It began in December 2022, when the Town issued a draft scope for the DEIS. And the draft scope is basically a table of contents annotated with a little more information on what should be covered, but the Town believes should be covered in the EIS. That draft scope was put out for public comment. Comment was received, written comments, as well as verbal comments at a public scoping session. The Town revised the scope and issued a final scope in April of 2023. Since that time and through the fall, and winter, the Town and its consultants have prepared the draft generic environmental impact statement in accordance with the adopted scope. The Town Board has been reviewing that document and accepted it as complete in February of 2024. And "complete" means the required information, the information that was required by the DEIS scope is included in the draft GEIS. The analyses are presented in a way that the public hopefully can understand in the best terms possible. And now that EIS is put out for public comment, which we're here to receive tonight. Written comments will be accepted through April 2. That's about 45 days from when the EIS was completed and posted, and we're holding the public hearing tonight. After this public hearing, SECRE requires that the Town Board as lead agency respond to all substantive public comments that are received, whether they're in writing, email, or verbally at a public hearing. The way that those responses are provided is in what's called a final environmental impact statement, or FEIS. Once that FEIS is complete, the Town would be in a position to adopt what's called a finding statement. And the finding statement summarizes the environmental impacts and mitigation as put forth in the DGIS and the FGIS, and it sets forth the Town Board's rationale. Once that finding statement is adopted, the SECRE process is over. Once the SECRE process is over, the Town would be in a position to take action on the underlying proposal, which in this case would be the PPR. And it's important to note that, obviously, just because SECRE's completed, the Town Board can't take that action until it's legally permissible to do so. So, the DGIS evaluates the potential environmental impacts of the proposed action of the PPR. This is the same slide as we just did, so I'm not going to go through it again, but it's really important to note that the purpose of the DGIS is to look at the potential environmental impacts of that action. Specifically, SECRE requires that the lead agency at the end of the process choose from among the reasonable alternatives available, the action that avoids or minimizes adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable, consistent with social, economic, and other essential considerations. This is what's often referred to as the weighing and balancing of environmental impacts with other social, economic impacts. So, the DGIS was prepared to provide the lead agency, the Town Board, and the public with information about the greatest adverse impacts that are reasonably foreseeable from the proposed action. This is an EIS unlike many other EISs, and so the goal was to provide you and the public with information about the greatest potential impacts that are reasonably foreseeable. So, consistent with the scope, what we focus, what the DGIS focuses on are potential changes in the number of flight operations at East Hampton Town Airport, as well as three other surrounding airports: Montauk Airport, excuse me, the Southampton Helport, and Gabreski Airport. The DGIS evaluated the potential environmental impacts with respect to aircraft noise, air quality, emissions, greenhouse gases, vehicular traffic and noise, natural resources, land use, public policy, and community character. It also analyzed three alternatives: the no-action alternative, if nothing were to happen, it's required by SECRE, the full closure alternative, the HTA closure alternative, as well as an alternative where there were slight variations on the permissions that were proposed. The DGIS is available on the website of the Town. It's also available in the Town Clerk's office, both in East Hampton and in Montauk, as well as the libraries in East Hampton and Montauk. There was a summary of the analyses that was presented to this board on February 15. That recording is available on the airport site within the Town website. And public comments are accepted, excuse me, in hard copy to the Town Clerk, as well as via email at airportDGIS@EHamptonNY.gov. And as I said, the Town would respond, is required to respond to all substantive comments in a final generic environmental impact statement. And with that, I'll turn it over to the supervisor.
So what we're saying tonight is we're asking folks to limit their comments to three minutes. As you can see, there's a clock in front of the Town Attorney, so the clerk will be checking on that. The order, we're going to go in, folks have signed up. We'll do that first. Then I'll take a show of hands of whoever in the room hasn't had a chance to sign up and wishes to speak. And then, once we've gone through everyone in the room that wants to speak, we're going to go to the phone. So, I just want to make sure folks understand that this is just us taking public comment, and, as Peter stated, that we're not looking to have a dialogue or conversation. So, we appreciate that you respect that. So, we're going to start now with public comment, and the first one signed up is Erin King Sweeney. Welcome, Erin.
Hi. Good evening, supervisors, supervisor members of the Town Board. My name's Erin Sweeney, and I'm the Executive Director of the East Hampton Community Alliance. As the Executive Director of the East Hampton Community Alliance, I'm pleased to share some preliminary feedback with you. We will also be submitting formal written comments. EHCA has taken an active role in the community and in the local discussions about the future of the airport. We remain grateful for the productive conversations, commitment by the Board and Airport Director to ensure the future of the airport, and for the aviation community for willing to roll up its sleeves to make all this work. I think we can all agree that East Hampton is a unique place and is worth all of the effort. EHCA notes that the reference in the report to its studies and appreciates that the Town values them. Among others, EHCA commissioned a diversion study and an economic impact analysis. The diversion study demonstrated the significant impact of any contemplated restrictions or closure at East Hampton on Montauk. The economic impact study, while perhaps dated at this point, showed that the airport contributes well over $75 million to the local economy. Thank you for recognizing our constructive contribution to the future of the airport. EHCA remains extremely proud of its efforts with the broader aviation community in adopting the Pilot Pledge, which has directly contributed to neighborly flying and better relations with the community. While we acknowledge that the Pilot Pledge is an entirely voluntary initiative, we encourage all to realize the positive impact it has had on the community. If we had told you five years ago that the aviation community would come together to commit to curfews, environmental initiatives, and friendly flying, you wouldn't have believed it. The proof is in our actions. It's amazing what we can be achieved when a community comes together with a shared commitment. EHCA remains willing to continue these efforts and participate in productive conversations among all interested parties. EHCA encourages the Town to use current data when analyzing traffic at the airport. We note that the DGIS does not include traffic from 2023 in its analysis. It's important to note that the traffic during the summer of '23 was down approximately 25% across the board. This favorable trend should be included in the DGIS and considered for any future plans. We'd also like to point out that the report references, quote, "increased traffic at the airport." While we understand this is a popular narrative among those who wish to close the airport, it is important to correct this misunderstanding. Traffic has actually decreased over the last 10 years, namely, the average monthly traffic has decreased with an average of 1,000 fewer monthly operations in the previous 10 years. 2020 was, of course, a spike, which is solely attributed to COVID. Helicopter traffic since 2019 demonstrates the trend. 2019, approximately 9,000 ops. 2020 was COVID. 2021, 8,500 ops approximately. 2022, 6,700. And 2023, 6,100. We do not feel that the DGIS adequately takes into account the impact of COVID on the traffic numbers. In addition, we're concerned about the aggressive projections contained in the report. While we understand a conservative approach is required under SECRE, we're concerned that these aggressive projections leave the inaccurate impression almost done that the airport traffic will skyrocket in the coming years. For example, it estimates that there'll be 37,000 operations in 2023, only had 23,000 operations. Finally, we note that the proposed restrictions seem to continue to unnecessarily penalize local pilots. We are hopeful that this will be adjusted to reflect the importance of local pilots to the local aviation community. So, thank you. I know I'm out of time. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Erin. Barry Raybeck. Welcome, Barry.
Hello, Board. Hi, I'm Barry Raybeck, Director of the Coalition to Transform East Hampton Airport and resident of Wayne Scott. Once again, I stand here in yet another attempt to implore you to do the right thing regarding the airport. Now, you have commissioned a massive DGIS designed to show that dealing with this out-of-control pollution plant is reasonable. You consider three alternatives: maintain status quo, enact restrictions, or closure. You realize with public sentiment overwhelmingly in favor of dealing with the airport as the seasonal horror that it is, you must do something. So, the study is slanted toward your previously chosen path. Enact what you call meaningful restrictions with a large nod to not inconveniencing the airporters overmuch. For example, the curfews occur mainly when almost no one flies. The Board's approach has long been one of compromise, that the 1% who are airporters, mainly non-residents, have the same weight as the vast majority of actual residents who benefit not at all. This is a fallacy. As Eldridge Cleaver once noted, you're either part of the solution or part of the problem. Great issues, such as the quality of life in a community and region, and mitigating climate change to protect future generations, require solutions, not pandering to polluters. They require fundamental improvement, not minimal modifications of an unacceptable status quo. For example, the Gun Club has been closed for over a year. Wayne Scott and environs are much better off. The noise, lead pollution, and danger are not missed. We are safer and happier. The DGIS barely touches on the current pollution, air, water, noise, lead, generated by the airport, mainly addressing negligible vehicular traffic impacts. It barely mentions the incredible lessening of pollution if the airport were closed. Quote, "EHCA provides some benefits to the community, including employment, economic and recreation opportunities, and access for emergency medical and civilian services." These modest or nonexistent benefits are seemingly weighed against only the noise from aircraft. This narrow view of the negative impacts ignores those recognized in other sections of the DGIS as negative, e.g. wasteful energy usage, poor air quality, climate change. How can a town which claims it is green so casually ignore the largest polluter in our midst? Once again, the people who care most about this community have to fight to be heard over the noise of unwelcome luxury aircraft. Finally, the DGIS poses the worst-case scenario, positing that tens of thousands of operations could simply shift to Montauk's tiny privately-owned airstrip nestled by the water. There's but a single line noting that Montauk's owner need not permit any unwelcome operations, commercial or otherwise. Montauk Airport morphing into EHTA is another fallacy. Choose option three: close the airport. It won't be missed by most of us. People in East Hampton and well beyond will be safer and happier. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Kelly Bloss. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Kelly Bloss, and my family and I are residents and taxpayers of the Town of East Hampton, specifically the Montauk Hamlet. The report confirms that the proposed action, the PPR framework, or even closure of the East Hampton Town Airport, transfers the environmental impacts to another part of the same town, namely, Montauk. The impacts are significant to Montauk. It's not acceptable to change operations to reduce noise and other environmental impacts at East Hampton and force these impacts and new safety concerns onto the Montauk community. The report reiterates that increased traffic and the related impacts are not well-aligned with the Town's identity. I agree, and since Montauk is part of the Town of East Hampton, we do expect the same accommodation. Montauk will experience the greatest adverse impacts specifically. It would experience the largest increase in flight activity compared to other affected airports. 58% of the impacted flights from East Hampton will divert to Montauk. With a PPR, there'd be 132% increase in flight operations at Montauk, and with a closure, a 448% increase in flight operations at Montauk. News from aircraft operations will increase and produce noise in new and different locations, at levels greater than the exterior acceptable levels, affecting an additional 300 acres of land and 152 additional residences in the flight path, during the day, all when the community is outdoors. There'll be a significant reversal in traffic patterns, given that only 4% to 8% of traffic travels to the far east from the East Hampton Airport today, reflecting that very few people in Montauk are served by the East Hampton Airport. So, we have all of these impacts to Montauk, and yet the operational change will only affect 24% of East Hampton's annual operations. The report also minimizes or dismisses the direct input from the Montauk Fire Commissioner submitted to this board in January 2023. Specifically, given the increase in flights into the Montauk Airport, there's a current lack of onsite fire suppression equipment at the airport that will create elongated response times to emergencies. We can expect the number and frequency of emergency situations to increase due to runway takeoff and landing limitations, and that none of the safety issues related to the fact that the Montauk Airport is privately-owned were addressed in the report. So, the report assumes that the current conditions are acceptable to the Montauk Hamlet. They're not. They're tolerated. The proposed changes will make a less tolerable situation even worse. At 610 acres, East Hampton is approximately 15 times the size of the Montauk Airport. Montauk is essentially a privately-owned airstrip. East Hampton has three runways, support functions on-site, and no residences within 2,000 feet of a runway. East Hampton flight operations are spread across a substantially larger area, and the impacts are dispersed. The shift of flight operations and resulting environmental and safety impacts to the much smaller Montauk Airport and Hamlet is concentrated, material, and unacceptable. Lastly, the assertion that only 14 homes in Montauk are impacted, and that installing internal noise attenuation modifications in these residences is the only required mitigation to the proposed action or even closure, is absurd, disingenuous, and acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next up is Tom Bogdan. Next up is Tom Bogdan.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Bogdan, and I am a citizen of Montauk. There is only one singular and unarguable conclusion within this SEACRA study. No matter what form of any town legislation aims at eliminating or restricting East Hampton Airport traffic, Montauk will be directly and significantly affected, no matter what. The study itself, other than that one fact, has no relation to the real world when considering Montauk and its bearing on this issue. Two examples. In the study, there's a map that shows of a 1,000 radius circle around the Montauk Airport. Within that circle, there are 14 residential houses. On another page, there is a similar map of a 2,000 radius, twice the size of the Montauk map, containing the East Hampton Airport. The number of houses within that radius is zero. So if you go by the study, if you use this comparison, Montauk is far more affected by airport traffic than East Hampton Airport. Is that true? Is that an example? Is that a problem? Of course not. It doesn't make sense. There is a problem here, but it doesn't relate to the real world. Eastlake Drive Airport. Eastlake Drive is the street on which the Montauk Airport is on. The study says no problems increasing traffic because of the small bicycle use on that street. Eastlake Drive is a skinny, two-lane, no-shoulder country road. It's a dead end one way, one way in, one way out. It ends, it's two miles long, and it ends in a dead end. Within those two miles, there are 173 residential homes, five motels of 180 rooms, five marinas, 305 boat slips, seven restaurants, 250 seats, 352 private membership clubs, an 80-space RV parking lot, 54 parking space at Town Beach, and the largest fishpacking place in the state of New York. And connected to Eastlake Drive is Route 27, which is a dead end too, but that ends in one of the most top 10 tourist attractions in the entire state of New York. 150,000 people travel to visit that place in automobiles. My three minutes are up. Then let me make one point. That's all talk. You guys have a problem. We understand that problem. In reality, what has to be done is we have to cooperate with you, and Montauk must compete with you. We are here, but Montauk deserves two things. Montauk deserves realistic understanding of our problem and a will by the Town Board to work with us and protect Montauk from these realistic problems that will happen. It also, it also deserves to be, you must be conservative in your movement and your actions so Montauk is protected at each step. The former administration originally would transfer immediately 40% of all traffic from the East Hampton Airport. Absolute disaster. A conservative movement would be far better, a 10% increase per year. So along each step, we can take our time and realize and measure what the traffic, what the problems are, if we solve them or not, and where we are going. Montauk deserves a conservative, optimistic move by the Town Board in this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you for the extra time.
Welcome, Hershey.
Good afternoon. This letter is from the Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Committee, of which I'm a member, and it's addressed to Supervisor Burke Gonzalez and members of the East Hampton Town Board. For over a decade, the Wayne Scott community has requested steps be taken to reduce impacts from the East Hampton Town Airport, particularly with regard to noise. The town's effort to make, take the airport private and impose PPR regulations is an important, if imperfect, step in that direction. Perfect? Why? One, it is not clear and seems unlikely that the PPR regulations, as established at present, the so-called proposed action, will adequately address the noise and safety issues that have affected the community over the years. Two, the proposed action does not address the vexed questions regarding helicopter routes and the need for more nuanced recommended operations procedures. And three, the proposed action fails to sufficiently address larger climate goals the town claims to uphold and has made manifest in its climate action plan in 2015 and, most recently, in its declaration of a climate emergency in the town in 2021. In addition, the scope omitted a study of the impacts from an alternate PPR based on a slot system establishing the maximum number of operations per hour, an analysis of a ban on lead-based aircraft, and/or cessation of avgas sales, and a discussion of the means for modifying the PPR once it is adopted. Nevertheless, it is understood that discussions of these points falls outside the SEACRA review and the draft generic environmental impact statement under consideration here. The Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Committee appreciates this opportunity to comment on the document at this public hearing. In its analysis of environmental impacts, three affected airports, the DG EIS claims to examine a reasonable greatest impact scenario as required by SEACRA. This is an oxymoron. A greatest impact, or to call a spade a spade, a worst-case scenario cannot by definition be reasonable, if reasonable implies fair, sensible, moderate, not extreme, or excessive. Let us look at the proposed action and the no-action alternatives, noting that the starting point for the model is a high-assumed baseline for 2024 of 37,147 flight operations at East Hampton Town Airport. Under the proposed action, due to the methodology used and the assumptions made in the absence of any real-world data, some of the impacts, namely those concerning operations and noise, are overstated and cloud the conclusions to be drawn. Regarding Montauk Airport, it is assumed there will be no reduction in total operations. 58% operations will redirect air and jets, and all that cannot land at present will be substituted with aircraft that can. For noise impacts, a 50 DNL, not 65 DNL, as employed by the FAA standard, is used. Those drastically exaggerate potential impacts to Montauk. Under no action, because of the way in which SEACRA is structured and the focus of the draft generic environmental impact statement is on impacts to affected airports, the draft generic environmental impact statement fails to adequately consider impacts to East Hampton Town Airport under the no-action alternative, which calls for a dramatic increase in activity in 2024 and beyond without the PPR. Positive impacts due to PPR restrictions to air quality, natural resources, land use, and community character are left unexamined. Nowhere is there a discussion of impacts.
Hershey, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
At East Hampton Town Airport should operators, most notably helicopters, easily rearrange their schedules to bypass PPR. Nowhere is there robust examination of impacts from the cessation of the sale of leaded fuels. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up, we have John Corain.
Welcome, John.
Hi, thank you. Nice to see you again, Kathy. For those of Board members who don't know me, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm John Corain, resident taxpayer, town of Southampton. I put myself in the category of your nearest neighbors. I'm here representing both the Southampton Town Airport Noise Advisory Committee tonight as well as the NOAC Civic Council, which has over 1,500 residents in your nearest neighbor on the Southampton Town side. Those of you who have heard me before, and you've heard from many, many of my neighbors, our community is most affected by your airport. We're affected by noise. We're affected by pollution. And what I'm here tonight to ask you is to have the courage and the conviction to make meaningful changes. To echo what Barry had said earlier, if you were to close this airport completely, I assure you, no one in my community would miss it. We would applaud you. Anything short of meaningful changes will simply be kicking the can down the road to a future Board who will hear the same complaints and disappointment that you're destroying our quality of life. People can't enjoy their homes. We can't do barbecues. We can't sit at Sag Main on days because of the noise of the helicopters coming in. So my simple request is to take advantage of the opportunity before you to make meaningful changes. Anything short of that will be the old saying, snatching defeat from the jaws of victory. You've come this far. I don't even know when this, I've lost track of how many decades this has been going on. From my own personal experience, I've been in it for 20 years, and I've known people who've come and gone already. So please do the right thing. You're going to hear reasons why you shouldn't do it. Status quo is always, it's appealing because it takes the burden off of you. So I'm just going to look each of you in the eyes and just remind you that you're dealing with people's quality of life, and you can do something that will improve the East End for generations to come. And if you don't take advantage of this opportunity, it may never come again. And I'm well aware of the pressures from very, very, very wealthy people who are telling you that if you close your airport, $75 million of economic impact. Come on, $75 million is a house on further lane. So the numbers that are being tossed around, it's truly what Barry said. I don't even think it's the 1% benefiting from this. This is 1/100 of 1% of the people who come out here are burdening the other 99% of people who want to live here because it's such a unique and beautiful place. So please, I'm looking 16 seconds ago. Please do the right thing. Stay the course. You've come this far. You've spent so much time and energy. Don't cower to the pressures that be now. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Welcome, John.
Thank you very much, and welcome to the new council members at the end of the table there. My name is John Cullen. I'm from Riverhead, over 22 miles away, and I've been up to this podium many a time. But I want to go back a couple of years ago, before the pandemic. There was a luncheon at the Rowdy Hall over here, all about the airport. And I got up and spoke, and I said that the airport is broken and that I don't think there are enough Band-Aids to fix it. And I still feel that way. I know that there are legal problems are still going on, and I expect that 2024 will be the same as '22 and '23, as things won't change even after this meeting. But I hope things do change when you finally get control of your airport. As far as the Montauk people go, it's my understanding that that airport is a PPR also, and that every flight that comes in there needs to have permission. The question is, will they take every single flight available, or will they restrict people to give the Montauk residents time? I'm not sure if the people who spoke from Montauk have spoken with the new airport owners. Seems like nobody knows who they are, but I believe the manager there is very welcome to speaking with people, from what I understand. And on another note, as far as the leaded gasoline going on at the airport, I hope that changes. Out in Boulder, Colorado, I read today that the town next to Boulder, Colorado, which would be kind of like what John Corain just spoke about, the next town neighbor, they're suing the airport right now because their planes are leaving Boulder Airport and going over their community and polluting and dropping all the lead on them. So I hope that in the future, leaded gas is taken away from there. And in the big picture, what I would hope for at that, at the meeting at Rowdy Hall, previous Councilman Jeff Bragman mentioned, and it's still out there, take a one-year hiatus from the airport. Make it that the nonessential flights cannot come in. People that own their own private aircrafts, sure, they can come in. People that own aircrafts on the land there, they can go up and down. But take away the nonessential taxis. That's what's been the major problem around here, and it's been a major problem all the way for the people on the North Shore and the South Shore, from New York City to Orient or from New York City to Georgia Capone. Thank you for your time, and thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, John.
Good day. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak. I've been here as well so many times, but here I am again, and thank you for the opportunity. Upon reviewing the flight tracks that were not visible today but are on the website, the EHCA flight tracks, I find it very interesting that the flights are showing that they go north, but that goes towards, it's very limited. It doesn't show how the North Fork is affected at all. This is a very condensed picture of what we have to deal with on the North Fork. Laurel, Riverhead, Matatac, Orient, all still getting hit, but yet somehow neglected to be on this map. So I'm a little, I'd like to see this corrected because although this is like EHCA, but when it comes to noise complaints, we are being somewhat recognized here with regards to the color coding of the noise complaints. And let me emphasize, like I've said before, we don't file noise complaints out of boredom in any way, shape, or form. I would much rather myself be doing anything but filing complaints, writing emails, writing to my officials, oh, and by the way, calling Blade and other operators to ask them to please stop flying solo, please be cooperative, please help out. I've done it so many times last summer. People don't even want to take my call, so for all the local pilots that are here, pick up the phone and call those companies that we all love and enjoy that are ruining our communities on the North Fork because now many of the seaplanes decided to start to continue taking the flight paths of the helicopters. Why? When they're leaving New York City, they could be taking the South Shore route. I mean, whatever it is, but what's happening right now is not working. And yes, so we have some noise complaints that are mapped out on here, but the flight tracks are not showing the complete truth of how we are affected on the North Fork. We too love our community. We too want to enjoy our backyards. We too, just like our neighbors in Southampton, we want to enjoy our beaches, our parks, and everything else, but we still cannot do that at this time. I've been doing this since 2008, and it's not fun, but I will continue to fight for what is right, and changes need to occur at this airport. There needs to be an overall reduction. Operators need to work with the public. As of this year, the Eastern Region Helicopter Council has not chosen to have a public meeting at all whatsoever, and last year, they disrespectfully opted to put flight paths over the cemetery in Calverton, which is completely disrespectful for those that have served this country, this beautiful country that we are all privileged to live in. So thank you very much again on behalf of the Town of Southold Aircraft Noise Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Marion Lindberg.
Good evening, Supervisor, members of the Town Board. I live in Wayne Scott, a mile south of the airport. Two Sundays ago, I was clearing leaves in the afternoon, and it didn't take long for the blowers in the sky to begin. An aerial motorcade accompanied my spring cleanup, and I asked myself, how would the town's proposed changes make this any better? Might they make it worse? Maybe people who need to be somewhere early Monday, who can't defer their departures until after 8:00 a.m., would leave Sunday afternoon instead, adding to the Sunday din. And that's the thing, even after the DGIS, we don't have a good idea how travelers, pilots, and helicopter companies would modify their behavior, even if the minor changes proposed and helicopter companies would modify their behavior even if the minor changes proposed are implemented. The town's consultants wrote that it's, quote, "difficult to determine with precision," end quote, "how people will alter their behavior," so they didn't try. For comparison's sake, I looked at the New York City Environmental Impact Statement regarding congestion pricing. Some people in New Jersey and the outer boroughs are concerned that when New York implements its daytime toll south of Sixtieth Street, more trucks will be diverted into their neighborhoods. So it's somewhat comparable. But what I found is that the city's consultants didn't just count engines and multiply, they took behavior into account, despite it being difficult to do so. They conducted surveys. They determined the percentage of people who had flexibility to modify their routines. They used informed judgment to predict the number and type of vehicles that would still come into New York City and those that would use other routes. In contrast, the East Hampton consultants made assumptions, including that every flight operation that could be affected by the town's proposed regulations would continue to operate and therefore would divert to one of the other airports, but that is not factually realistic. At least some people who fly because they consider their time valuable are not going to fly a longer distance to Montauk and sit in traffic to drive west to East Hampton. They will find another way or not come here as often or possibly at all. The greatest adverse impacts are surely greatly overstated impacts. Given a DGIS that offers mathematical speculation instead of informed judgment, the town has little to go on. You can implement the changes on a trial basis and see what actually happens. However, if you enact the policy changes and they fail to make a difference, we all should be open to other alternatives, including closure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. All right, that's the list I have of folks signed up. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to address the board? And if not, I'm going to go to the phones. All right, Jason, we're going to go to the phones now, please.
We currently have no callers on the line. We had one or two people that called up for a brief moment, then hung up. I've also previously tested the phone line multiple times. If it's okay, may I test the phone line on the record to make sure that everyone sees that it works?
Do.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. Loud and clear, this is Jason Howard from LTV calling in, and the phone line works.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
All right, that's it.
Okay, I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board at this time? Okay.
Hello, everybody.
Welcome, Bruce.
Just want to make sure that you all knew I got dressed up for the occasion.
Could you say your name for the record, please?
Bruce Solomon, resident of Wayne Scott, a member of the WCAC, Wayne Scott Tree Society, and Wayne Scott Heritage Project. I am here as a private citizen. I think it's pretty obvious that the folks here have brought out the data.
Please don't grab the microphone. Thank you.
So I'm really just going to just make it quick. I wasn't prepared to have anything in front of me, and I'm just going to just be another body in the room that has a voice, and hopefully folks can just really look at the impacts that this airport has on multiple entities. I think it's very clear that the quality of life that we all have chosen to be here for is being diminished, and the airport would be one of those things, in my opinion, that is having probably one of the largest impacts on our quality of life. So I hope that you have the information that you need to make an informed decision about the future or not of the airport in Wayne Scott. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Teresa, you spoke already.
I'd like to inform the board that we also have one caller who just called in.
Go with that, Jason, please.
Okay. In three, two. Hello, caller ending three, three, one, eight. You are on the air. Hello.
Hi, this is Barbara Grimes. I live in Montauk, and I'd like to just reiterate what some of the other Montauk residents had to say earlier. Please don't kick this can across the town to our area. I want to point out that the Montauk Airport is privately owned, and you will be losing control over the traffic that diverts to Montauk into the hands of the private owners of this airport, and they can do whatever they want with this traffic. They can increase it over our hamlet as they see fit. I'd also like to point out, as a board member of Third House Nature Center, that this airport is within the Suffolk County parkland out there, and there is a great deal of environmentally sensitive land out there and a lot of wetlands that will be compromised by any increased traffic. So I'd like the board to take that into account. Please don't dismiss Montauk's impact if you change the airport use in East Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the board?
I have a motion to close, but I'd like to leave the public record open until April 2nd.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.